Can't get the DNR there, you know, there's what, only two people there.
Yeah.
I can't, and can't get them there, so we have a, like a chilling grill for our residents out there, like in the summer. So I'm thinking about maybe trying to incorporate that into a chilling grill and open it up, so it'd be more for everybody. And then like we would invite you guys to one of our chilling grills in the DNR, you know, to come with you. Hopefully get on more dates to maybe.
Two or three years ago, they, DNR was there and they had a real nice program, they, you know, they caught some fish and they showed us.
Yeah.
They haven't done that anymore.
Really?
Well, yeah, last year they were there, give a real good presentation, it's about a year ago. You and I were there and then, well Larry showed up late, but he was there.
I didn't get there last year because we had COVID, my wife had COVID and everything involved as well. But, yeah, yeah, last year wasn't too bad, but.
This year they, DNR need to get run out of there and on their way and.
Well, he said that, I talked to Jason, the two that come, they've always come forever, you know. And he said, you know, they're just since COVID hit, everybody in the DNR is coming, say I'm not going public anymore. I don't do anything virtual and all that.
Oh crap. Spanners.
I'm trying to get some of our land in forest reserve.
There we go.
Okay. Okay, do that with the NRCS for that probably won't you?
What?
Did you have to do that with the NRCS?
Well, we gotta go, we gotta meet with the assessor first, take over what we wanna put in it. And then as they come and look at it, yeah, and then you apply for, gotta be before February.
But they'd be pretty well.
I don't know if I should tell you my other woes, because I have been here quite a bit.
Yeah, I, I didn't think he had any.
We're all ears this morning.
So, we got a new treasurer, and when we get our taxes, we get about like fifteen different sheets, you know. Because we have property all over the place, and nobody's really researched or looked into it, but this year, um, they had put down, they had a band rider come on and do some searching, and we got looking on the internet, the treasurer looked on the internet, here the bathrooms, the state bathrooms, that pump house, and that shelter house on the other side were on our property.
Really?
And he said, we called, he said, it can't be on our property, that's state property. Nope. So we came in and met with him here, and that property has been in our name since nineteen forty.
You would have been trying to tax it on the law then?
We think, you know.
Well, the assessor would have records of that.
Yeah, I would think. Build a state.
That's right. Tell the state of our refund, just tell the state, I won't pay it for this.
Well, one of the things that caused us too, is that that, that tax was like four hundred dollars last year, the year before. This year was over two thousand dollars. So that was a flag too, like what the heck went up? But here, no, they told us.
Oh, where's that at?
She told us that we owned all of.
Is it right there?
No, we owned everything, the lake, all of this. She told us that this was all in our name.
No, it ain't, or shouldn't be.
It was.
That's a state lake.
That's right.
And I said, well, I've been in history, and I said, I know, I looked in history, in nineteen forty, it was sold for ten thousand dollars to the state of Iowa. And I could not find that deed, of course, we went to the box, we had a lockbox, and I've never been in it, so we went and looked. All the abstracts, it's nineteen forty and thirty, all in the thirties were there. But I could not find that deed, well, they went and then they found the deed. That was written in nineteen forty. So, yeah, so now they went back and we did everything. Wow. I looked at it and I said, do you honestly believe this?
My Karen.
How you feeling?
Better.
It's not by you.
Sure.
Exactly, it's on all that.
Louis Beck, talk to me.
Hi, Tavious.
Hi, it's Tavious.
Good morning, Tavious.
Good to see you.
He said it's that show, he saw Chris.
Good, you guys.
Right, good to see you.
It was a dream.
Yeah, I see.
We, um.
Even though I was backstage.
So, I got that.
I got a watch.
I spoke with the Amish couple.
Which one?
Yeah, we recorded it, right?
Group.
I watched.
Take care, Russ.
See you, Russ. Um, they're not sure if they're gonna move forward with it, they understand the prescription of the area if they want to.
So I, I gotta see.
I guess the plans are maybe that was more of an emergency burial place, in three years, they have another area with another community where they'd like to build a rec center, community center, and have the cemetery, cemetery next to that.
You're talking about the Amish?
Yes, so for right now, until I hear back from them, that's not something I think that needs to be on your guys' radar. So, they're gonna decide what they're gonna do moving forward with that.
Okay.
Um. zoning commission will have a meet and greet with me on the sixteenth.
Okay.
So, everybody, the new people, and then everybody that was on can meet me and.
Yeah.
No business will be discussed, we're just gonna make sure they know my face and to put my face with the name. And, that was it, I think that's all I needed to let your guys know for me. Alright?
We're good.
Alright?
That's seeing, yeah.
Good, yeah, supposed to be a great day today.
Yeah.
Gotta enjoy it somehow.
Maybe we play hooky.
I don't know, we got guys putting septic tanks in everywhere, you know, over in Marshall County, I got.
Yeah.
Seems like, I don't know, people got, uh, more money at a bank or something, something, somebody's making more money somehow. Stuff's not getting cheaper, and, and they're still building.
Isn't that crazy?
Yeah, just mind blown to me.
It is.
If you need one, you need it.
It's everywhere, yeah.
Yeah, I had one guy over in Marshall County, he bought four acres, and we ran through a whole deal trying to get it, uh, sectioned off and then, and everything, and then the, the farmer that sold the land, then a, a month after we got all the paperwork done, decided to sell another eight acres, big field right next to it, so then we gotta take everything back to the commission to get everything left at. I was like, you guys are just.
Job security.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, keep it busy, huh?
You guys are killing me.
You don't have to worry about teenage daughters if you got these guys building stuff. Alright, we'll see you guys later.
I, I talked to, uh, to, uh, Tom, Sean Webber the other day. And, you know, he and, and, uh, the, the secretary, kind of, let it go there for a while. And I asked him, but Tom's saying, don't, he's a lot better. He said, he said, we've been.
Working together.
Working together, so that's, that should be.
Well, like.
A lot easier chemistry.
Yeah, I got ahold of, I got a call from Chris for the, the burial site, we talked that one through, and then there are two new houses that are coming into the county, uh, on ag land, and so I contacted him for both of those, just to make sure that they were on his radar. I think one of them was, one of them wasn't, so, we'll, we'll get it figured out, but yeah, I.
Well, that was nice to hear, that he did that, uh.
Sean Webber then, yeah.
He, because Tom, I talked to Tom a couple times.
He was a little frustrated, he was.
Very frustrated.
I can understand, because being new, it's crappy. No pun intended again, but it's crappy job to get started, you know what I mean? There's some, there's a lot of bump in your head to get some of those things figured out, you know. Especially because people want stuff done now, now, nobody calls you and says, hey, next month, I'd like to do this, it's, I just did this, now how can we figure it out? Yeah, how can I make it work, so.
But anyway, that was nice to hear, because, uh, we had to get on it.
Yeah, it's.
I talked to Chris on that one too, it, there was, from, from Sean Webber's person, to Sean Webber, there was mix up.
Mix up too.
Tom didn't know exactly what was going on, and when Chris talked to him, Sean Webber was just fine.
Yeah, I, you know, it's just a matter of change.
Yeah.
Nobody loves change and, and it'll take some time, but.
Well, I think there for a while, he was just.
He's helped me out over at Marshall County a couple times too, so.
Yeah.
Uh, with some answers that I didn't have, so.
Well, I think Chris was pretty much, you know, having a, uh, sand flavors.
Yeah.
Systems, and talks about twice a month.
Yes.
That's where contractors were in here a couple times.
That's where they get buzzed, yeah.
Because they give an estimate, and then here at towns.
Yeah.
Uh, twice a month, so, a lot of frustration there, but it sounds like things are going well, so I, I attributed it to you being.
Well, no, I don't, I don't, I don't know at all, but.
You're the new entity, I'm sorry.
If something's working better grade, but I won't take the credit for it.
Well, I'm not for sure, I can give that one.
No, no, alright.
Hey, nice to see you.
Yes, you guys too, have a good one, thank you.
Have a good week.
Yeah.
Have a good week.
Lewis Beck, said best show he's ever seen. Pat Beck was in tears after, I mean, the lady that played the mother in the play was from.
The Sally Field character?
Yeah, I think so. She, Melody Pence from the Phantom?
I hope they didn't hurt her.
Okay, uh, she's only been in one of our performances, it's been a long time ago, but when she heard we were going on a play, she said, and that probably, she wanted it. And actually the fourth scene, she just.
I'm happy for her, did you have a good turnout?
Uh, yeah, almost seventy, which is a very good turnout.
Probably with a pretty small auditorium, they're happy.
It does, it does, but I remember when we were at the church.
Seventy would be over.
Seventy was.
Oh, yeah.
I was taking tickets.
The place we were staying in out there, we put it on the market.
You're taking tickets to what?
It was to take the tickets, it was a couple of. Independents.
Why didn't you buy it?
We don't go, we ask.
Eight hundred and.
They were from independents.
How'd they hear about? How'd they hear about?
The director, yeah, the group for business is.
I told, uh, more, more than that. Well, it was three bedroom and two and a half bath, you have a place.
That's how they found out.
Attached to store garage and then had another detached store garage.
Because the doors weren't open yet, and, uh.
It's on the three miles of travel road.
I was sitting there with my.
You know how people are out here complaining about washboards?
Are you the guy that was the priest in drinking habits?
Washing, period, but some of it was really bad, and some of it, if you got going fast enough, you could just hear. Most of that same regular operating, so, man.
Probably.
Soon they get eight years away, I think it was twenty sixteen.
I guess people bought it in two thousand eight, I think it was, for three hundred and, no. Two hundred and forty thousand. They got around the market now, eight hundred and fifty thousand. Beautiful place, I mean, it really is.
Governor liked that.
And everybody out there tells me it's people coming in from California.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and people coming in from California are running the prices up like that.
My wife, well, we, we bought her folks's house when we moved to town, and, uh, so she sold her house. Well, the couple that bought it came from San Francisco, they put a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in that house, so then they wanted to sell it, because they were gonna move to Arizona, but you can't get close to four hundred thousand for a house in Dyzer.
Well, in the way they decorated, it was a little California.
It was California decorated, and.
It's ridiculous.
Did they sell it? It wasn't on the market?
No, no, they, they decided not to sell it, that, that's just gonna be their summer home now.
Yeah, maybe it's just been low for a three hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand. Most of those properties out there, if it's up in the mountains, very few of them are less than a million dollars. Now, Richard's got that kind of money, I don't.
In the Mars, um, where my sister was living, there were contractors or, like, real estate companies from California buying up land, but running up the rent, so they weren't renovating, they were just jacking the rent really high, so it was like, big corporations buying up houses. So hopefully that doesn't happen around here.
Yo, Gates. I couldn't believe it. Buying up our land. Wife says, I really don't wanna leave here, I said, I ain't buying it. There's no way.
Be a nice Christmas present.
How in the world can you?
Same way with land, land price, I mean, there's some ground right close to me, they were asking twenty-two thousand.
Yeah. I got some books, or, one book, I stopped at gas, I need to get gas, and here was this thing with books in it, or magazines for property, so I grabbed it and I was looking at it yesterday afternoon a little bit. I can't believe it, there was some bare land, four acres, just short of a million dollars, with nothing on it. Nothing on it, they're selling a view.
Selling a view.
Because it's mountain, mountain views. I'm sorry, there ain't no acre ground worth two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So I take it audits are pretty expensive? Hmm.
Is that for Beth?
Um, San, the landfill.
Yeah, I remember what they used to charge schools for audits.
Let's have it done, though, make sure nothing's.
Yeah, they gotta make sure the jobs.
Well, and there's a lot of time put into that detailed work, so, that's why, probably isn't the time. Do you ever hear back from the state?
I don't know one here, but I, this one, so.
It's maybe a short week, so we have everyone's day off, this week, Friday for everyone's day, and, so, yeah, and everybody will have the canvases afterwards.
You have it all?
I do, can't wait.
Well, we need to probably try to get that in agenda quick too, I mean, we need somebody like Karen in on work on Friday. Don't we? Don't we? No?
For sticking up for me.
Three day weekend, baby. Not supposed to be too bad, I don't think, it's supposed to be nice.
Too nice to be sitting here.
Got all done with your harvest?
Yeah, I got wrap up work, haul the norms, stuff like that, it's good. I got chunk of fence that I'd like to look and build, let's see.
I got a trailer suit this week, one of his old ones, backpacks.
Yeah.
I'm excited.
What's he doing, it's, you got left, anything left to do? I have a lot of some cattle tomorrow, so, some old cows and.
Uncle Plex's cows were super loud this weekend.
Yeah, I could hear them.
So I don't know if they got some new ones, or the wind was just blowing, right, but it was like freaking the horses out. So we're standing out in the yard walking the dog, and we're going, are they in the backyard?
Were they cows or cows?
I don't know, they were just loud. I didn't see them, they're like a mile and a half away.
They may have, were they cows?
Maybe.
Then they make louder.
Yeah, Dottie wouldn't like eat, because she was so freaked out.
I know, Saint of Monroe texted me. Was it this weekend or last weekend? I think it was this weekend. Somebody was doing brush shooting, scaring their dogs.
Pretty much every evening this time of year, don't you hear, shots? How long was the season last for hunting?
Oh, yeah, I got.
I was gonna say five weeks.
And bow hunting was before that, right?
I think so.
It's in the few. Feels so late.
Two tier, or, there's some second tier election candidates.
Twenty-nine.
Boy, that's always fun. I think that day I'm appointing. When we gotta sign them, I'm appointing Kurt Seager on the P, that day he heard it's gonna be a lot worse.
Well, I never.
Tom, I done.
Turnover, good.
Been a while, Nikki's been coming without you.
For me?
Nikki's been coming without you, it's been a while.
We were starting to get worried.
You see that crazy neighbor, Art, mowed his yard?
Who? Becky, think you need to do that?
No, I think I need to. Mine's getting long enough, it's about time I got a mower. Should've mowed it a long time ago, but I'm just waiting for it to finally get to where it ain't gonna grow anymore, that doesn't look like it's gonna happen anytime soon.
It probably will.
Yeah. I hate mowing.
I just do it to get rid of the leaves.
Yeah. Yes, I didn't look at the trees, see how many leaves.
My home's having bad leaves too.
Mine are pretty good.
My home's having bad leaves too.
Week or so.
Just a week.
Yeah.
All the maples did those, they're dead on the backyard. I think the maples are in my yard.
Two more.
Cause I know I have sugar maple.
Yeah, it's not bad.
Prettiest color.
Not bad, not bad, not bad.
The wind.
Windy.
Some of those leaf piles are like knee high to walk there.
Yeah, it's on the east side, or else you don't have that strong northwest.
Yeah.
Gotta watch them.
All right, yeah.
They're still, sidewalk's still clear, you can still just walk out the, walk door.
So we got that sidewalk around back that, that I think to get to the garage. That was where I was talking about the knee high, I had to like shuffle through the weeds to get to my garage.
How long does it take you to go down? Nothing gonna happen here for a while.
We got people in Paoshie County.
And you got a half hour.
I'm not sure what you're talking about. All for sheriff and lord and people down there. Twelve, probably. Just probably full year.
No, that's before.
Well, he's getting from there and then county.
I'm not talking about.
As men bend now in Paoshie.
If you got something to go down, you down there.
We gotta call them down here, they count up.
God, it's all there, you got some bad oil.
That's, I got a good amount of those too.
I see what.
Get us down here, cause this will be something else.
Yeah.
On the news.
I've been more than. One in Europe. Friday was our last time, our time out in the county, so.
I mean, yeah.
From right here.
What are you doing with your parents with their?
We had a grand, yeah. Yeah, the last week, we've been, I've been holding this, yeah, we were in the shop helping get.
Rocking.
No, uh, tractors and molina.
Now, we had a pretty big week.
Bigger trees, bigger trees.
A rock.
Yeah.
I didn't touch it, I'm on a Z.
The one that doesn't, it's just.
Dizzy?
Is Z.
Oh, busy. Guy asked, he says, you know, he says, they brought a rock out there, and he's now pushing it all inside the road again.
Hydroseeder, what that is.
Well, the green.
I know.
Material that goes on.
Yeah, I know. With the. I don't know what we're gonna do with that.
Yeah, that's it, Bill.
Yeah, go ahead.
I bet that would work good for places, you know, where you.
Well, they need to, doing that for years, and they just, they don't seem to get it seeded right away.
Yeah.
They used to physically go out there with a seed, you know. If you don't get the right, right in the right time, not doing.
Your Kimmy. I don't get it, I have to look here and see if I can find it. Did he even brought any?
Hydroseeder's kind of a, I mean, it's, it's, we only have two or three guys who do it, I mean, nobody else. Certain deals, you gotta, absolutely clean it out.
Yeah, we can't, can't do it when it starts freezing, cause.
You put on a roller, transfer down there.
Clean enough, put it away. Kinda, we did about.
I'll tell you what, Bruce, if we have a hole in the.
Seven miles, seven miles. Kinda had a lot more than, I might have to spend first year.
There you go. I'll go down to his, going down in his office then.
Oh, okay.
A little dirt on there.
Oh, yeah, bro, fuck.
I say, he's not on this one, and he's not on that one, oh, he's on yours, he's not on this one, otherwise I would have done one on this one.
So I'm just seed material.
I can't remember for sure if he was the last button or not.
In a tank full of seven or fifty gallons.
Yo, I had.
I bet it was sales.
Do we too?
One dirt in which is not.
I told myself, okay, I'm gonna hang up, I said, just call this number back, when you get your options, call the auditors. They'll answer the phone, and they will put you through to dirt. I didn't know I had.
I thought you said, I don't know, the auditor's office and ask for Karen.
Well, Karen's gonna answer it.
I say, like a lot of times, if I know it's a salesman, and he's down in his office, I'll put the salesman on hold, I'll call his office and be like, hey, I'm transferring down to salesman, don't answer your phone.
He's calling you back, Dan.
Everything will shoot along with it, seven tips. Why would you?
You gotta be able to, I mean, like.
You gotta play the wind.
Oh, we said, you said, uh, the, uh, call down to his office.
You, you won't blow it. Long ways out there, so.
We've been using fan nozzles, you know, like this, but we've got two of them that look like fire, fire hose.
Uh, I, I don't have it, we just transferred it from the noise here.
We don't, we have no need for that.
Comes with it, so, if you wanna call the auditor, just call the auditor's office, and they will, they will, um, dispatch you down to Earth's office. He may not be, he may not be at your office.
No.
They what?
Do they take a debit card for license?
Yeah, I go get deer license, can you use a debit card?
It seems like you can run it with a credit card.
I don't know, if you, credit card's gonna cost you three and a half percent probably.
Debit card?
Well, maybe it won't, because that's a, because, uh, licenses for, uh, that's a state deal.
Morning, everybody.
Hi, Laura.
Morning, you may not have to.
Why didn't bring my vehicle, you don't want my chair? How's it going, Laura?
Much better, I got an injection and that really helps.
Yeah.
Yep, now we're waiting to get an MRI, but.
What kind of injection? Yeah, I think.
Steroid injection?
Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna go in. This vehicle line of.
My knees are just weak and painful, they give out every now and then. And I was talking to a friend, and they actually had a knee replacement. Deer license, boy, I said, man, I don't think they're. You said, they're.
Like all the note tag, or special note tag. Three several landlords, Tom, that's why.
Uh, you know, now.
She's getting waggled.
Sometimes that actually takes care, takes care of even having it replaced.
Oh, well, I would rather do that too.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, actually, I got an appointment with the doctor there in Dyzer this week, and get it going.
Yeah, I hope it does.
Yeah.
My original referral, from my regular physician, I couldn't get in anywhere till like December eighth, and then like, I can't go there.
Yeah.
So luckily I, kicking around, my daughter works in.
Yeah, I gotta get a hold of the doctor, I gotta.
I got him Friday. So now we need to wait for an MRI, which I have to wait for the insurance to, which actually do help.
And Rod, like the guy I worked with, Rod Holder, he roughs, that's wrong, he's.
Oh.
He takes steroid shots in his knees every year.
Oh, does he? Okay.
He might have two, both hips replaced. He got hit by a train one time, caught, killed him.
Oh, my gosh, he's alive, yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 not good, yeah, he was in Outlaw City for like six months.
Really?
Got MRSA.
No.
He was working for a co-op up in Parkville, before he became a town, yeah, he was working, had that ball coach at the time.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
He's very lucky.
Very lucky, yeah, that MRSA really, they didn't know.
Yeah, that could be bad, yeah.
They left him open for like three and a half months, just in the gut area.
Yeah.
But, yeah, shot him out of the feet truck.
Really? Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, lucky man.
Yes, and boy, he's, you know, good.
And then I told him, every time he talked about this, I said, you're really lucky, because you never died, you never got to work for me.
See, your life would have been so different.
He would, I feel so blessed.
No, mine's much better.
That's good.
Okay.
Very good.
I just do it my turn, I did that.
Had some cars down there yesterday?
Yep, we had almost seventy people there.
Nice.
Through the show. Louis Beck told me afterwards, he says, best show he's ever seen of Wolf Creek's.
Is that right?
Yep.
Cool.
His wife was in tears at the end of the show.
Really?
Well, it's a sad story, so, wow.
Yeah.
But the lady that played the mother position, uh, just absolutely took over the fourth scene. Just, yesterday was fantastic.
Awesome. I, uh, I got down there about one o'clock.
Okay.
Restocked the bathrooms up there, right by the auditorium and. I was using the, I needed, I used a saw down there at school anyway, so I thought I'd kill two birds with one stone. I was outside and I was constructing this thing in my garage and four balls down, so. I kept looking down there like, gosh, I'm like, shit. The weather was so nice.
It was almost a three hour show.
Yeah.
But, everybody, I mean, everybody was very impressed, it was a good show.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I looked Friday night, like at eight o'clock and there, I don't think they had an intermission yet, I don't think.
No, uh, intermission wasn't until probably eight thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was long. I know the first scene was over an hour.
Oh.
And then the, another half hour, second scene, then it was intermission, then the two half hour scenes.
It was still magnolias.
Oh, I would love that, I bet it was great.
There was a sign out here.
Oh, there probably was.
Yes.
Went up with my knee though, till I got knocked out.
I have, I have signs and notes in my house right where I, as I walk by every day, I.
Uh-huh.
Damn.
It was, the peep, the cast was cast wet. Her positions.
Well, good.
They just blew away.
Wow, that's crazy.
It was, there was no males.
No, it was six.
So there was no male parts, or was there female playing a man?
This, this version of the play only had six women.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
But to learn the lines for three hours.
Hmm.
Yeah, I, I know my wife was in back with the microphone, they all had hearing aids in, maybe they had a problem, they got the first couple of words. So, nobody knew that was going on. Yeah.
Well, they do now.
Something like that.
We, we.
Gateway secret.
They do now.
God has to.
We, we've done it before. The ladies directors, Deb lost some prayers, that's her business, called hearing.
Oh, okay, well, that was handy, wasn't it?
Good morning there, sunshine.
Yellow's my favorite.
Yellow, you're just.
You can keep that, we'll have that, we were talking about that last week.
Okay, yeah. I walked in, when I was doing the, the men's restroom, I had to walk by that entrance to go to the closet. When I went by the first time, it was like, I heard bark, dog bark, and then it felt, it was like, something like a dog was, you know, a torn, so I went back. And I come back, went into the, the guy's restroom and I heard some talking, and then dogs barking at the same time, I'm digging. I looked in there, it's about, about a six foot hallway, you know, so I couldn't see everything, but I'm like, look, there's nobody in there. I went back and shut it up and I heard it again, it's like I stepped all in and there, there was something they play in the background during the play, there must've been testing it.
At the end of the first.
It's something so real.
At the end of the first act, yeah, the one lady's dog gets loose and it's going after him, of course, they all say, you know, do some, do some. She says, kill, right, kill. That's the end of the first act, so.
Yeah, I was very confused, it sounded so real.
It's even annoying.
That really got you to, you heard the kill.
It was like, what the heck?
Yeah.
It was fun, it was.
What's the next one you're doing?
Deb's got one.
Do you need another week to?
Deb's got one, she wants to put on, but I don't wanna put on, so.
Hmm.
Yeah, we'll see.
Gary.
Pardon me?
Gordon's sale today.
Am I going to? Is Annette going to? Always. She's kinda, she's down there, isn't she?
No, Deb's got a video that she wants to do.
Thank God she went down this road, Dan, come on, come on, boy.
Cast that's willing to do it.
Do you guys like those?
Timing, all about timing.
Yeah, it is.
We may, so let her do it, but if she can't get a cast together.
Yeah.
So, I think we oughta do some.
Does it all.
Well, with some.
They train her.
With some kids in it, we always get better crowds with kids.
Hard to get people to work down there.
Well, yeah, the work is hard, the hours are crappy, it's cold, the elements, and the paint sucks, so there's so many things wrong. I mean, there's really not a whole lot right, other than they're trying to keep it going and mom and dad aren't there, so it's a whole lot harder. I mean, it's just so different.
Yeah. Well, Jason's doing a good job.
Jason's got a very good team and it's hard for him.
Well, we're very lucky to have that barn.
And he, he'd be like turnuses, you know, if the kids just tried to take that over out of the blue, it's just really hard.
It is.
Anytime you take something over from your folks at a very young age, it's not fun, not easy.
No, it's not, my dad died when I was twenty-three.
There you go, and you wonder every day if you're doing the right thing, too. And you still wondering, forty years later, it's like.
Terry, you all worked down there. Yeah.
They worked on the lot.
Yeah, he was, but still be working there, so.
Everybody misses turning down sale lines.
Everybody doing what?
Everybody, check, 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 working down the sale line. You know, in the eighties, you know, uh, you pick, pick up a little extra work. And, so I, I worked several winters down there, terrible cold in the last year.
It is.
It wasn't for me.
Where were you at?
I was in the kitchen.
Stand by the fire.
That's right.
Going hunting this afternoon, Mary? Going hunting this afternoon?
You don't even have.
Well, you just got a tag.
In the kitchen. She had a horse in the kitchen.
Did, you got your tag?
Hopefully she washes first.
They will talk to you.
Second team they go.
Yeah, yeah, we go first.
How come you got so much clothes off?
I'm just thinking that myself.
Gee.
I didn't actually need this.
What do you have a work on?
Outside, I looked in the window and I thought there was frost.
Maybe, that's why.
Oh, yeah.
Now I'm working in my timber. Dreams, my dreams. You can always take it off.
Yep.
Didn't warm it up yesterday.
Yeah.
I'd been out bow hunting, but.
Oh, out west?
No, out here at Dolce Place, out west, that was last week, that was for mule deer. And we hunt first season shotgun here in Iowa.
Seen a big, big buck with a big rack, just western Murray Lou Cruzes down in one of them valleys.
Hmm.
Was that one of Joel's turkeys, uh, was it on the hot?
I don't know, I forgot to call him and tell him I seen a turkey on the side of the road.
I was like, oh, no.
Was that close to there?
Yeah, it's just off of there.
Was it dark or light colored?
That was a dark.
Yeah, it could be wild in there, yeah.
Good time of year for it, you know.
Do you have any turkeys there?
Huh?
You raise turkeys?
Annette and Clint raised turkeys.
They do.
Yeah.
Joel's got some, but then he's got wild ones down there on the bottom, too.
Well, they're good eating.
Yeah.
It's wild turkeys.
I got a picture of them there once in a while, coming in and landing, camera with a picture of them.
There's a lot of whoosh shocks that raise turkeys. I mean, they do, but, yeah, you're not supposed to have turkeys and chickens together, I don't know if Joel does that or not, cause the chickens carry blackheads easily, they, they are carriers.
He's got turkeys and chickens that just run everywhere.
Yeah, and one of these days, he's gonna bring something in, he'll buy something, and that's how it works, yeah.
I, uh, I just like to go to the store and buy them.
Why, I have, now I'll get a free one.
Really?
Hy-Vee.
I see if you spend enough at Fairway to get a free one, too.
Probably.
I went to, I'm usually a, a venting Fairway guy. Um, but I was in Wildwood the other day and I went to Hy-Vee and I just hate that place. Nothing seems like it's in proper order to me, you know, everything's just everywhere.
I'm glad you said that, cause I don't like it anymore, cause everybody goes there.
Nah, I'm going back to them. They have good meat, too, I mean, Fairway does.
Oh, yeah.
They're hard, good split.
They buy it right off of Dan's farm.
Really?
That's why.
That way makes all the money.
Kurt, can you reach that clock?
Oh, yeah.
Well, yeah, neither one of them's changed.
It's a good buggy, isn't it?
Why don't you ask, why, why don't you ask Bill? Bill's too short.
Hey, I'm shorter than you. See, he's got a stretch.
Oh! I wouldn't, did I stare at him?
Try that again.
You know, it's a.
What a efficient time there, William. Nine oh four, according to that.
I'd go off your cell phone instead of that.
That is, it was his cell phone.
Well, trying to get that one up there, you think you can reach out him?
Well, I'm a chair, yeah.
Tom, try to reach out.
But it's not, that's not OSHA approved.
I'm not gonna look, you stand on a chair to reach it. Or if you are gonna do that, you better do it before Garrison gets in there.
Yeah.
You guys don't care about that big thumb much, right?
No, you can't see it.
Can't see it, can't.
That jock with Mark?
Thank you, Kurt.
That's folks, that's behind me, I'm never, I never look at that. Lordy, lordy.
So Iowa has been declared an emergency for bird flu now since last.
Somebody else had, what are you raising your hand for?
There were four cases as of, uh, Friday and then Sunday morning she got her, uh, her request. Declared it a, an emergency.
That's, um, I guess when I saw it, it was a third county.
There was a third, no, she, she declared Iowa.
Yeah, but no, when I saw it, there, there's apparently there was bird flu in two counties and then that, that update, they, there was a third county.
Yeah.
I thought it was up before. Sean Ritter made some buck that first go around with those chickens up northeast. Yeah, he's a.
Tell me about that.
Grounds hay, named, ground chickens with hay and.
Oh, okay.
Just made it.
Yeah.
What, who'd be in charge of that government entity was up there making sure.
I gotta talk to you, I gotta respect you with a letter, my insurance company.
Are you saying that the government paid him for his birds? Did they have birds, is that what you're saying?
No, the guy who come in and, and disposed of them.
Oh, got it, okay. They don't, I don't think reason the farmers don't get.
Really? No, I don't know, I just saw Sean Ritter racing.
Well, the reason I said that is since they killed all those sheep about five years ago, those farmers had to take insurance, a lot of them, and get their birds. So, and sometimes those swabs weren't even sick, it was just precaution. So I would.
I'm gonna ask, you get down there.
You get the flu.
That would be next year, the twenty thirty plan coming up.
Oh, yeah.
Starting next year.
Yeah. Wow.
You're back here now?
I don't know.
Too late.
Better be back there, right?
So. Garrison, you wanna stand on that chair for us?
Would you be happy with that clock?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, that'd be sound. Hi, Garrison.
How's it?
There's the guy that can jump on.
I just asked him, he wouldn't do it, he says he's more to hikes.
Throw your authority around.
Well, you can go find a ladder and fix it. You gotta be safe when you're doing it.
Yep.
You gotta stand on a chair or anything like that. I'll get you.
It's not like they're swivel chairs or anything.
Yeah.
It's kinda.
How much is that?
You don't have to work to contact.
I'll hold Warren.
How many points to contact?
I don't wanna stand on one of these.
Yeah, you mean, I'm climbing ladders? Climbing ladders?
Some climbing a chair, you can't have very long contact.
Oh. Some of those regulations, they have climbing ladders, they're definitely college educated. Like, you're supposed to go up and not, I think they expect you not to leave contact at all, I mean, what are you supposed to?
Three points.
Levitate up, it's like, god.
Three points.
There was one lady at, out at Pioneer years ago, when it kinda first started getting around and she was young out of college and, you know, that, that book. That book was due on, it was like, she, her quote was, there's no such thing as an accident, it's like. Such thing as an accident.
There's accidents, it's just wanted to happen, but.
Yeah, that's not what was in her quote, her quote was, there's no such thing as accident, it's like, ooh, you must've drank some bad water down there.
Do you know that there are actually people that believe that on the religious end of things, that it's not an accident, it's a punishment from God?
Really?
There are really people that believe that.
Well, it kinda sounds like she was more on the, there's a cause for everything, not.
Where that was coming from, how, how young she was, or she formed that opinion, it might not have just been out of common.
It was, um.
You don't know.
I guess.
No, like.
A lot of our stuff in the work area, you can't.
It's, you, you did something to cause it and then something.
A shot coming out there.
I said that a lot, Greg.
Consequences.
Oh, some of the people just.
No.
Consequences of behaviors, it wasn't an accident, you climbed on a chair, it's your fault.
No, like, I think what she was saying for her was like, the, you know, the, the broom didn't tip over by accident, it tipped over because you angled it wrong.
I didn't know.
So it's your fault, the angle, the thing wrong, so it fell, so it's because you did something, cause and effect, not because.
I just said that, Laura.
No, but you said because of behavior, not.
There's so many ways to look at that.
Shelter.
I just don't think.
Their shelter, and, uh, they redid, uh, utility room, they redid, uh, type of spin, I guess, I haven't, just spent a night, dumped like a half gallon of water and it started flowing the wrong way last night, so I haven't done that since.
Well, we don't get to use that room anymore.
What, Kevin?